I'll call meeting of the Charter Review Commission in order. Stephen Stein has informed me that he will be here in just a few minutes. He's on his way. Greg Richards, as I make most of us know, said he had another appointment that was not allowed him to attend today. I want to say a few opening words, then get into a presentation before we go into the first agenda item, which is the public hearing. Thank you all for coming this afternoon. We've got a few in the audience, and we do have one email from someone who commented. I'm going to first say a couple of words about the agenda and where this meeting fits into the overall process of making changes to our city charter. In my mind, this is a, this is the third step in a six-step process. The Charter Review Commission was established by the City Council in January of this year, and that was step one. And they pointed the seven of us to work on this project. We were passed to review the charter and propose changes. We've been meeting every couple of weeks since then and identified a number of changes that we will review with you in a moment. So all of that activity was step two. And step two will continue even after this meeting today until we get ready to make our final presentation to the City Council. So tonight is step three. The City Council specifically told us to seek input from the citizens at large, therefore today's public hearing. Even at our meetings before, they were all open to the public, and we did have some public members attend, but we did not have any input from the public at our previous meetings. So we want to hear from anyone that cares to comment or suggest changes to the charter or to what we have currently have identified as possible changes. So after the public hearing, the CRC will take what we hear and discuss, debate, and decide on more changes if necessary. Step four in the overall process is the CRC handing off our proposals to the City Council. We hope, most of us up here hope, that we can get that done in the next thirty to forty-five days. Step five then will be in the City Council's hands as they decide what to do with our proposals, if anything. They can say, take them all, they can take some, or they can take none. But then, what they do with it then is they go to step six, which is take it to the voters. Because nothing changes in the city charter until the voters of the city make that happen. So today is not the last opportunity for the public to, at large, to participate. There'll be several other opportunities, but this is an important one if we, if members of the public want to make comments about what we have done or the charter in general. So with that, I will jump into the presentation unless there's someone on the board wants to say anything at this point. Okay, I'm just going to real briefly, what is the charter? I think the charter is a "we the people" document that defines how we want our city government to operate, as long as it does not conflict with Texas state law. Basically, if state law is not specific, we the people have the freedom to define the details of how we want to operate our city government. Therefore, any changes to the charter must be approved, as I said before, by the voters in the election. The council established us in January 2019. These are the members. We have a past mayor, past City Councilman. We've got Brenda Craig as a retired city secretary. Greg Richards, who could not be with us today, is an attorney here in town. Michelle Yanez is a high school government teacher. So all of them have a particular background that makes this of interest. And the three of us on this end are just really very active, involved citizens. Peggy McKay, Mike Sigur, and myself make up the Charter Review Commission. Well, if any of you have trouble sleeping, try reading the city charter. Not only the city charter, we were given numerous other books and manuals to read, and if you had insomnia, that's what you did. We also got Charlie Zek, an attorney of, I believe, of San Antonio, who's an expert in city charters, to come talk to us. He looked at our current charter and suggested changes in the charter and make sure we complied with state law. We also had a lot of input and assistance from Mike Hayes, Cheryl Brown, Mark McDaniel, and Amy Dozier. All in all, this group up here had a lot of discussion, debate, and decisions on proposed changes. I can tell you, not all of the decisions were unanimous. Many were, but in some cases, we did vote, and we will, when we formally inform City Council of our results, we will tell them what the vote was on each of the items. So what, where are we as of today? As I mentioned before, the charter is ninety-one sections. We eliminated fifteen of those sections by just saying they're not needed because state law covers it, or we combined some sections. We reworked things to add clarity. We also did what we refer to as twenty-four minor changes. They're not minor in the sense of just minor wordsmithing. We think they're important changes, but they're, they're, they're not, they don't change the meaning of the charter, but it does make the layman, it makes it easier for a layman to read the charter and understand what's going on. And so we, twenty-two of those just added clarity or removed redundant information. Two of those changes, we did change the number of days that City Council had to accomplish a task, and we think it was important to give them basically additional time in both cases. But we had seven, what we refer to as significant changes. And we just think, we had a lot of debate about those seven. We just think they would result in better policy for our city. So what I'm going to do now is briefly go through these changes that we're going to propose, or that we have as of today, are planning to propose, and hit the high parts. For instance, Article Two of the CRC, of the charter, is, refers to the governing body. All these changes, we call minor. We all know that the City Council elections are done on a nonpartisan basis, and we just think it's important to add that phrase without party or partisan marker designation in that section 201. So when a layman or someone's getting ready to run for City Council reads that charter, they'll, they'll see that very clearly, that this is a nonpartisan action. Again, section 202 qualifications, it said you had to be a resident of the city for a year up to the election. Well, what is the election? Is that when you file for the election? Or is that, we just added the word "day" to make sure that's very specific as to what that year mean, means. And so forth here. I'm not going to read all of these. I will say that section 204, City Council, if there's a vacancy on City Council, they have the task to fill that vacancy by seeking applicants and voting someone in to fill that vacancy for the unexpired term. By the current city charter, they have thirty days to do that. That feels rushed to us. We've seen that happen in the past several years, that that does rush City Council. We think that we just give them fifteen more days, we'll give them another meeting time so that they can have a little bit more time to seek applicants and do that in a more reasonable time. Okay. Here's the first real policy change. Under Article Two, Governing Body, Qualification of Council Members. We added it in this section that basically says that, we refer to this as the nepotism policy. And I'm not going to read all of it, but basically it says that when you file for office or thereafter, you may not be related to someone employed in an executive position within the city. And basically, the city manager decides what an executive position is, and I will let the lawyers define what related is. And it is, it is defined as second degree of affinity or third degree of consent, guarantee. And I always have to look up and understand what that all means, but, but that's, that's in the language, and that's what we refer to as nepotism policy, and we believe it's important to make those changes. All right, that's the first one, Article Two. Again, we have a second policy change. We're adding term limits, and our term limits basically say that in succession, you're limited to three full terms. Now, we do know that that's very seldom happened in Kerrville. It may have been some years ago. It did happen, but, but right now, we just think it's, let's get it in there so in the future, it won't happen. It doesn't say that you can't serve more, that you just have to step out for a term and then get back on City Council in some format. We're also adding under section 203(c), what we refer to as automatic resignation policy. That is, if, when your current council member files for mayor's office, they're automatically resigning from their current office. Now, that only really applies to two positions, Kim Clarkson and Gary Cochran, since they're going to be, they will be in the middle of their term. It applies to everybody, but it impacts place one and two. So if they file next January for the mayor's office, they have said, okay, win or lose, I'm not going to be in place one or two. So if they lose, they can't still serve. If they win, they can be mayor, but if they lose, they, and then, then what happens is if they resign, automatically resign, then the council will have to fill that seat after the, after the canvassing of the votes.
Yeah, the resignation is effective the day of the canvassing of the votes.
Yeah.
So they would serve out that year. I mean, you know, they weren't able to serve really until the election, basically, so...
Part of the reasoning for doing that was that places three and four, if they choose to run for mayor, that they run at the same time the mayor runs, so it doesn't really affect them as far as moving forward. But places one and two, if they chose to run for mayor and they lost the election, they would still be on City Council, and we feel like that's not a good policy.
Article Two, here's a big one that's, we debated long and hard about this, compensation for council members. Currently, the council members and the mayor receive twenty-five dollars for every posted meeting attended. This is usually a minimum of two council meetings per month plus a workshop, so a total of three meetings per month at a minimum. We understand that there can be more workshops or special meetings called that are eligible for the twenty-five dollars. But remember, these five council members are called upon to represent the city in meetings or functions all the time. We looked at how similar cities dealt with the compensation issue. We looked at fifty cities, all, they ranged in, they compensated from zero to seven hundred and fifty dollars per month. Eleven of the fifty paid their council members two hundred dollars per month or more. So after a lot of discussion, instead of paying them by the meetings called and attended, we thought we should just pay them a set flat fee per month. Since the mayor's called on to attend even more activities than a council member, we decided to pay that role more. As we understand that in the past, council members may have thought that they were entitled to other benefits from the city, we added language to make it clear that they may not receive any other benefits from the city. So that's, does anybody want to add anything to that that wasn't on?
And I think it also helps with bookkeeping. It keeps the city secretary or whoever keeps, has to keep track of who showed up at which meeting. It's just a flat fee, and like I said, there are, as y'all, if you haven't already found out, you will, there are a lot of meetings, and it was just a flat, cover everything. And even though your expenses are paid for, like when you travel, that is, that's not part of this. This isn't your expenses, but this is just a flat fee to cover all meetings you may attend.
Okay, we're going to move back to some more minor changes. Procedures of the council, we've, there was a term in there that called something law, it should be act. The definition of when a mayor, a mayor pro tem, definition of disabled was not very clear, so we added that. Section 307 about penal ordinances, it really is not necessary, it's covered by state law. We're suggesting deleting that. And then we created a new section 308. Basically eliminates section 1001 and moves creation of boards, commission, and committees under Procedures of the City Council. And that's, we think all of these are minor, but it just cleans up how the charter is situated and reads. Again, another set of minor changes under nominations and elections. This is primarily suggested by Charlie Zek, the outside attorney. He read through section 401 and 408 and said, you know, that's all state law. I know you want to try to say it in your charter, so, but you can say it a lot more in a condensed version and keep the same meaning. So we, we took basically ninety-nine percent of what he said, we made a few tweaks to it, but it really, we're not changing any meaning, we're just adding clarity, and it's state law anyway. But it's, it's kind of nice to have some of these state law issues in your charter so people that want to run for election, for instance, can understand better how to do that on a local basis. We really got into Article Five, Recall Initiative and Referendum. We made a lot of, a number of changes. Again, adding clarity, they're all minor. There's a language in there about what purposes an initiative or referendum may not be called. It was not real clear, and so we had, we cleaned that language up. And there's a lot of language in there about petitions, and, and with Brenda's help and her experience, we were able to clean a lot of that up so that it makes a lot more sense to people reading it. There's a language in there about petition signatures needing three hundred qualified voters. It shows up in three places. Really, it's not needed because it's the minimum number of signatures. And one of the minimums was five percent of the registered voters. Well, that's right now, that's seven hundred and fifty. So unless we had a significant reduction in registered voters, the minimum number's always going to be seven fifty. And so the three hundred is a moot thing, so we just took the three hundred out. So the minimum number, if you're, if you're thinking of, putting on a petition right now would be seven fifty for doing anything for recall initiative or referendum. Some more. Again, 506b rewritten, and Brenda really helped us do that. 510b, a result of a recall election. It really was not consistent with section 204, and we cleaned that up, make it remainder of an expired term. Just, they're minor but important changes. And City Council will then get the opportunity to decide how important it is whether or not to take it to the public. We did change section 512a. It only gave the public ten days to submit a referendum petition, basically ten days to get seven hundred and fifty signatures, and that's not possible. And now, I don't know that there's ever been a referendum petition in the city of Kerrville, but if there has, and they did it in ten days, that, they, they did some good work. But we, we're suggesting we give people, move that up to thirty days. Again, Article Six, Administrative Services on the city manager. City manager has been using email for some time now to notify people of his temporary fill-in. Well, the charter says that it must be a letter, so we're cleaning that up. And we, even though we've always done annual performance review, the charter doesn't say it for the city manager, we added that in there. It's in, in the current city manager contract, I'm sure, but we just want, we wanted to, one of the things we wanted to do is try to get the city manager language and the city attorney language the same, because they're both hired by City Council, and they ought to be treated, they're not going to be paid the same, or they might, they have different details of a contract, but charter language, we think ought to be the same for both of them, city manager. And we didn't, this was not initiative of the city attorney, who was in it in all of our meetings, but it was initiative of...
In the charter, it specifies the city attorney has an annual performance review, but it doesn't for the city manager, and that's one of the ones that you had.
That's better said. So the next article is the city attorney. We are suggesting a policy change here, but this is a policy that applies to city manager today. Today, as a result of the May election, if, if the new council decided to terminate the city manager's contract, they'd have to have a forfeit vote, the city manager, for the next sixty days. That's just, it's in the charter, it's been in the charter. We think that, that, so if you get a turnover in, in, in City Council, which we can do, we, we basically do every, every two years, because when we, we get a, or can, we get a mayor in place three and place four, that, there's at least a sixty-day window where you have to have a supermajority to terminate, terminate the city manager. We're going to apply the same thing to the city attorney, just make, make them treated equally. It doesn't mean you can't discharge it, but you have to have a forfeit, a supermajority for sixty days. Then after that, it's a majority. And that's, that's what we're proposing. But we do think that's a policy change, a significant one. That's why we highlighted it. Article eight, some more minors. We did a lot of rewriting with Amy's help of making Article eight about financial management, your budgets, and how they're presented and how it's put together. We're not changing anything, but we're just making it clear about how it's done and what is done. So there's lots of, lots of pieces changed, but no, no significant edits, other than we point out that they're going to use it as a guideline, the Government Finance Officers Association guidelines. I'm going to keep running through this pretty fast, as fast as I can. Article nine is municipal court. Right now, I could be a municipal court judge if the City Council would appoint me, and I know nothing about the law. But, so we're, we're suggesting that they make it, a licensed attorney has to be appointed as a, as a municipal court judge. And Article, section 903 talks about municipal court clerk. We tried to take out all references to city secretaries and court clerks out of the charter. That's not necessary, that's a, those are roles that are, are hired by city managers. We don't, the charter doesn't need to refer to those, we don't think, isn't it?
That's, that's my recommendation, take both out, but we decided only to take out municipal court clerk.
Oh, that's right.
I still think we should take out city secretary.
Yeah, but you lost that one.
I lost it.
Okay, Article 10, as I told you earlier, we moved, we moved that over to 308 because that's a action of the, of the City Council. Article 11 is taxation. We just limit, it just says City Council can tax. I mean, the city can tax people, that's state law. We're not going to do what's not state law, so we're not, you know, we're, we just don't think it's necessary, so we suggested removing it. Article 13, the power of the city to, in reference to public utilities, again, we eliminated it. Article 1306 had a reference to 1604, section 1604. There is no section 1604 in the charter, so we, we changed it to the appropriate section 1303. How that typo got by my case all these years, I don't know, but we'll... 13, here's another policy change. Not as, well, it's a policy change. Currently, franchises that come before ordinance, franchise ordinances come before the City Council require three ordinance readings. The only ordinance, only ordinance, type of ordinance that require three readings are franchises. We don't know of any reason why that is, so we're suggesting change that to two and make it consistent with all other ordinances as they're coming before City Council. We're getting close, folks. And this is 14. Again, we, we're, we cleaned up 1401 to refer to Texas Public Information Act, which basically drives publicity of records, and then we're suggesting taking out 1403 and 1406, they're minor changes. That is forty-two discreet changes, by my count, and I, I've counted it several times, may have to count them again, but there's forty-two discreet changes. I believe that those can be condensed into a fewer number of proposals, and we'll get into that after the public hearing, so that it won't be forty-two. It doesn't have to be forty-two valid items that go to the public. So, comments from the, from the team? Anybody want to come in?
I think it's fair to say that we argued, or debated, not argued, debated, every period, comma, wording, semantics, references in the, in this document from beginning to end. And I think the changes that are made were, while they weren't all unanimous, they were all pretty close to it. And it wasn't always one person in particular who was voting against, everybody had their own feelings coming into this. And we all came at it from different angles, different experiences with the charter, and I think that it turned, it is a great group of people bringing their own expertise up here and experiences with it. And I think the changes that are made are, they're good changes. They're well thought out, and they're healthy changes, they're healthy for Kerrville, moving forward, so...
Yep. Anybody else? Before we move into the public hearing, I just make sure, Mike, did you have something?
No.
You know, and I'm not sure we have anybody that wants to say anything, but if we do, let's, and we have questions of them, let's, we can ask questions for clarification, but let's not get into discussion or debate. That's, discussion and debate belongs up here with us after the public hearing. Let's just take the input, and I do have some input, and I'll read it into the record here in a moment after that. With that, let's open the public hearing at 4:28, 25. Do we have anyone with us today who would like to make a comment about the city charter suggestion? Bruce, come to us and state your name and address and your position.
Bruce Strick, six fifteen Earl Garrett. One of the things that I've noticed over the years that is, that has confused me and it's been brought up, I think, in council meetings, and I was just looking at section three in the passage of ordinances. When we do, when we bring a bond issue to the city, because of market conditions, normally, generally, typically, that's only read once. And, and it's not mentioned anywhere in the ordinance or in the charter that I've found, but that's what always happens, and sometimes there's a debate about that, and I just thought that might be something you'd want to consider to clarify in there, that it's part of state laws, I understand it, it's been explained in the past, but it is in the charter, and since you all are picking up some things that are in state law, to make it clear, that was one that stuck out to me. The other thing I had is, and I don't know that it's appropriate for the charter, it might be for the rules of the council, but in other cities that I've seen with a council form of government with a city manager as CEO, it's not uncommon for the mayor to be more of a figurehead and only vote in situations to break a tie. And I have found that that, that fosters a more collegial atmosphere. And I have found that that, that fosters a more collegial atmosphere. Because it's almost considered bad form to make the mayor vote. The other thing it does is it makes the mayor really wonder why they're voting. And maybe this issue hasn't been fleshed out enough to be resolved and requires some, some more, you know, discussion and, and fleshing out before it is voted upon. So, again, I don't know if that should belong in the charter or if that's something that city councils would adopt. But that's something I've seen that I think actually fosters a better community, uh, atmosphere in the council, and so it's just a suggestion.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone else? Sir, yes, man.
Dennis Ferguson, one-one Herzog. I'm just wondering what consideration was given to possibly raising the number of city council members? Or having council members at least elected from districts rather than at large?
Uh, just, we, we'll answer those questions, but after the public hearing, if you will, so. Anyone else? George.
Uh, George Brudy, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. Um, so the, I actually had similar question to that, I was thinking in terms of the, uh, single member districts as a possibility. But, um, also there's other, uh, cities that do a, similar to what we do, but without place designation. So, so this time there were two places open. They, um, they elect, you know, say there's five people in the race, you don't say which seat you're running for, you just run. And you, essentially, the top two vote getters get put in the seats. Um, there's other ways of looking at it, but a lot of them, there's studies to talk about whether that's a, uh, more representative way. Each different form kind of gets, gets at that problem. But, um, so, um, I'm thankful of the public hearing, uh, it's an opportunity to give us, you know, a chance to put comments on the proposed charter amendments. I'm a little disappointed that the amendments weren't published so that we could actually have seen them and made thoughtful comments about them. Um, I had seen some of this before, but not in a complete form, and so it made it a little hard to kind of piece together, you know, legitimate comments that might make sense. Um, Ms. Harrison referenced something else that you guys are gonna do, which might have been nice if it was done in the front instead of the back end. Which is, you talked about, you've got forty-two proposals or whatever, and you're gonna sort of categorize them into a, uh, to ballot initiatives. Um, if you'd have done that beforehand, then it might have helped the citizens to understand what goals you had when you made the changes that you made. Um, so hopefully these weren't like random, you just kind of change this, change that. Instead you say, we're trying to fix this and here's the, the changes we needed to make in the charter to accomplish that. Um, so it kind of reversed the order in what you did that. Um, but some of the changes that are being proposed, um, I went ahead and categorized some of it in some categories. Um, transparency is one, there's a lot of that that was, uh, especially in the budget, uh, changes that you made. Um, they seem to be removing, um, clarity and transparency rather than adding it. And I'm not sure what the benefit to doing some of them were, like, um, remove the need for detail break by department in the budget that's being presented. Um, that may be hard to do, but it's helpful to see it, and I'm not sure why we'd wanna remove the requirement that's in there. Another one that was, um, it has the, currently the council, the, the format of the budget is determined by the city manager. As well as any requirements that council provides. Uh, and they took out the council requirement, like, the council can't require the budget to be in a certain format. I'm not sure why we'd wanna do that. Um, simple reason that council is the only people that are accountable. And the people are maybe asking their council members for a change and they can't get any understanding out of that. Um, so, uh, and it removes the requirement to show salary and compensation of officers and employees. Um, again, not sure why. Um, it would be nice to hear explanations of what went into the motivation for some of these changes. Um, some of it, uh, changes, uh, how long a, an appointee of a recall can serve. Um, you guys, you mentioned that you changed it to, um, to the unexpired term instead of to the next election. What, what that's actually doing, it's unintended, but what it's actually gonna do is if the citizens decide to recall a member. They don't get to select the replacement, the current council does. And so they don't get to finish off the recall, if that makes sense, if you leave it the way you've got it adjusted. Um, the, the part about adding, um, the sixty day moratorium, if you will, on removing a city attorney. While I understand consistency, I think both of them, the city attorney and city manager, you should probably pull them out. And leave that to their employment contract rather than put it in the charter. Because what it's really doing is, uh, kind of tying the hands of the council. The charter would be cleaner if you just said council has the authority to do, you know, hire and fire, if you will, the, the two of them. And leave it to them to just, to negotiate their contract for this, because really what it's doing, the sixty days, is just adding sixty days of severance. To them, and they both have that in their contract, so it's not necessarily a, uh, a charter thing. Um, the, uh, to council input requirements, removal ability of, uh, yeah, the, um. Remove the ability of council, I guess it's eight oh seven, it's the new eight oh six, to make appropriation ordinances and reserves all rights. For the city manager to amend the budget. Not really sure why that was struck, um, what the harm was in leaving that in, I mean, how that became cleaner, I don't know. Um, but also the, currently the city manager can, the language says something about they can transfer funds within a department or within a fund. Uh, line item to line item, uh, but they're required, uh, they're required to notify the council in a timely fashion. Took out the requirement to notify council, um, again, not really sure why. Um, the, the nepotism thing that you added in there, the question becomes, how many people is that really? What's the problem trying to be solved there? Um, the state law already exists, I think, it's been applied. Um, to catch that in a, uh, financial, uh, fashion. If, uh, if someone's a candidate or a council member, they just recuse themselves if the job. If it's a specific salary to a relative, then they have to recuse themselves, other than that, they're, they're good to go. Um, terminal limits, you mentioned, uh, it's rare that we had three, so did you have discussion about just making it two? Like two terms as being the, um, the limit? Uh, because that would seem to be more kind of effective. Um, and I, I, you mentioned the whole sitting council member, so if Kim files to run for mayor. I didn't fully understand what the logic behind that was, what would be the harm if she files and runs and loses and just stays in council? She still just has a year left on a term, I don't understand the harm in having that happen, it seems like a odd sort of penalty. Um, the pay, um, I'm sure you guys had discussions about it, so I won't belabor that one. But, um, you know, council being, you know, when I'm sitting on council, I'm being told I don't need to micromanage. So I, I'm less and less asked to do work, so we're gonna give them a raise while they're asked to do less work. Um, and there's a financial impact to that, um, you know, it's small on a big budget, but it's something. Um, and, uh, that's probably about it, reading the reference. Yeah, um, mostly the, you know, overall, I would just say that the, um, the. The production of this draft, um, it's gonna be helpful to the citizens to know why, you know, what was the motivation behind them? Some cities produce the report, the so-called charter report, and they list it out this way. They basically say some backup reasons prompting the recommendation that you all are making. You know, specific groupings of recommendations, give the substance of the changes necessary to solve that recommendation. Any financial impact to it, impact on other laws, and then ballot language for adoption. If we solve that, we'd have a better understanding of what it is we're gonna vote on when it gets produced. Um, and if you produce something to the, um, public for a public hearing, it'd just be nice to have that. Before we actually had to say something about that, so, I guess that's about it.
Thank you, George. Anyone else in the public have any comments or suggestions about the charter? We do have one email that I'll read into the record, uh, this came from Harvey Brickman today, this afternoon. Is addressed to, uh, Mr. Cunius. Mr. Cunius, having previously served on a charter review committee, I would like to offer my opinion concerning the mayoral process discussion that is before the committee. About twenty years ago, the city voted to elect the mayor rather than having that position appointed by the city council. I did not agree with that system and supported electing the mayor independently by city election. However, I now see the need to at least discuss that process in the current charter review. I would like to take the politics out of the position. The council would choose the mayor each year. The council's job is to direct the city manager, please add this to today's discussion, Harvey Brickman. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to, in the public, that would like to make a comment? Hearing and seeing no one else, I'm closing the public hearing at four forty-one, forty-four. With that, uh, team, um. We've heard a number of things from the public, uh, um. Does anyone wanna address any of those in particular, or, um, do you want me to try to address some of them? How do you, how do you?
I'd like to say something about the salary.
Okay, um. Before we get into the particulars, can I just say a, sort of a high level thing, Peggy, and we'll give you.
Oh, no. However you wanna do it.
Yep. This, the public's had, uh, we've met seven times. Uh, all of these have been posted. Uh, public's had an opportunity to come, attend, and give input at any one of those seven meetings, uh, since late January. Um, we've had some attendance, we have, we've had not, we've not had any comments from the public. Uh, so, we're doing what council's asked, we're, we're, we're seeking input today. We're sharing where we are in our thought process and looking at it. We're, we're a ways away from finalizing our submission, uh, to, so this is all preliminary to, to the city council. I thought we made the red line, uh, available. Mike, did we make the red line available? Uh, copy.
Online?
Online?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we did not, okay, I'm, I'm mistaken. So, uh, public will have, uh, uh, at least two more opportunities to participate. In our report to the, to the city council, which we hope to do in the next thirty, forty-five days. We will put together very clearly our exact discreet proposed changes with a rationale for that change. That will be a written document that will be handed over to the city council. How city council, uh, deals with that's up to the city council. Will they want to get in public input at that time? I don't know, that's gonna be up to the city council. Uh, they then have to deal with what to do with that, whether to take it to, uh, a vote, uh, make it ballot language and take it to, to the, uh, the voters. That will happen at, at the city council's, uh, discretionary. But I would imagine that there will be at least two or three more times in that process for the public to see our final work product. And evaluate our rationale for our changes, at least the majority. So, I'm, I'm, anybody else wanna say?
I can comment when, after.
Go ahead, Peggy.
Well, you heard, uh, two things. One is, um, the salaries of council. If you increase the number of council and you increase the salary, you're going to have a greater impact on the financial picture. And the other one was to, if I understood Mr. Brickman's email, that he wants the mayor to be more of a figurehead. Um, I, I can't see paying a figurehead as a, um, double the salary of a council person. When someone on the city staff could do, be the figurehead for the city, and the position is, is irrelevant then, to me.
I believe, I mean, there's, we've, we've heard a lot of input from, uh, sort of how, how the council is elected and how it operates. From Mr. Stricki, Mr. Brudy, and from Harvey Brickman. Mr. Brickman's point was let the council, the five council members elect the mayor, uh, is, is the way I read his.
I think he meant the word appoint the mayor. In the past, uh, the citizens voted for five council persons. And the five council persons decided amongst themselves, those five, who would be mayor. And that was changed about twenty years ago, that the citizens elect the mayor as the mayor, not as a council member.
But that would be still treating the mayor as a, um, figurehead rather, rather than someone who's representing the people. Because all the people who did not get to vote for the mayor.
I agree.
Are not going to be represented.
Who didn't get to vote for the mayor?
Well, I mean, if you go to where the council.
They voted him as a council member, so they still voted for him, they just voted for him to be an, an equal member on the city council.
But the, but the council would be voting or appointing.
Appointing one of their members.
And that removes, one more time, it removes the voter from input.
I agree.
And I think the voter input is critical.
So you like it the way it is?
I like it the way it is, or don't have a mayor, just have city council.
Well, is there anything that we heard from public hearing today that, um, makes us want to revisit? A new section of the, or, or what we've already visited a number of times in the charter? I'll look to Brenda, is there any, any changes that you wanna revisit or, or?
Well, uh, I, the idea of the sixty days to remove, you know, after the election, you give sixty days for the city manager and the city attorney. You have to have a four fifths. Uh, I agree that could be addressed in a contract and just take it out of the charter. It doesn't, it's not something that, to me, needs to be in the charter, maybe it needs to be in the contract.
I agree.
Does the public have access to those contracts?
They're public information, so yes.
Well, the, the question, I mean, say it again, do you wanna revisit that, that question?
I do.
Okay, uh, and your proposal is to take?
To take it out and put it in their contract.
In, in both cases?
Yes, and the only reason we really looked at it was to make them equal, to make it equal, it was in one and not the other. It was just equality, so take it out of both and put it in the contract. Which it's probably already in the contract, if I, Mike, he's pretty good about catching all bases.
So.
It's not, uh, take away that compliment.
I think that the city, the city council always has the ability to, to replace the city manager and the city attorney by, uh. A majority vote. I just think what this does is you could, like John says, you could have a three-person turnover in the city government. And it would behoove this three-person turnover not to be able to come in right off the bat. And remove a city attorney or a city manager, give them a little bit of time. Or require them to take a little bit of time to, to study what they wanna do. I mean, I, I, I thought that was the reason why that was put in there.
Well, and that is a good reason, and, and I'm not saying do away with that at all. Well, and that is a good reason, and, and I'm not saying do away with that at all. I'm just saying, asking the question, does it need to be in the charter? Maybe it needs to be in their contract.
Well, but, but then you, you would leave, you're leaving it up to the contract writers at the time
Right.
to, to, and I, I'm saying leave it in the charter. I personally-
I, I can go either way, I just want to leave for both.
We can revisit it, but my vote would be to leave it, to, to put it-
But, but, are we all in favor of leaving it as it's, as it is?
I wouldn't mind seeing it in the contract.
Well, it doesn't mean, it can be, okay. Uh, make, make the proposal.
I thought she already did.
No, she, she-
She did.
Leaving both.
Leave both of them in the, in the charter.
She must leave it in the charter.
Long as they're equal.
All in favor of leaving it in charter, uh, taking it out of charter, or?
I'd just like to make a, a statement about, I guess it's really addressing what George said more than anything else. Uh, like John said, this, this, this charter review committee was formed in January. All the meetings have been posted, the public has been invited. Every, every recommendation that's been made for a change of this city charter was discussed openly in every meeting we had. All the votes were taken publicly. Anyone could have been there at any time to follow the process, to see what we were doing, and listen to everyone's discussion about why we were doing it and why it was voted that way. I don't think that we've done this backwards. I tend to disagree with what George has said. Uh, there is gonna be a detailed report. We listened to the, the advice of, uh, this, uh, attorney that came in that specializes in city charters and represents cities all over the state. We got his input, we looked at everything. Most of these changes were matter based on recommendations from either the, uh, Amy, or from Mike, or from, uh, policy, or from things that are redundant in the city charter that are covered by, uh, state law. Uh, you still have the opportunity to make your comments, you still have the opportunity to, uh, uh, follow this process through the city council. Uh, but there has been no exclusion of anyone, uh, with access to what we've done. And I don't, you know, I'm just gonna say it, I take a little offense to what George said about, uh, uh, you know, we would, we could have done this better, we could have done that better. George could have been at the very first meeting that we had and stepped up and said, I think we ought, you guys should do this or that, instead of waiting until we've finalized the changes that we've made. And, uh, there's going to be a detailed report written, and John made that statement when we started. There's gonna be a detailed report written of decisions that were made, how everyone voted, why we made these decisions, why we think these changes, and the ci, and the citizens will have the ability to read that and make their own determination. We've made recommendations based on what we were charged to do. I mean, you could have a hundred people on a committee, you could have all the citizens, but you're not gonna get anything done. This is what the city council charges us to do, this is what we've done. The reasons we've done this were never hidden from the citizens, they were always available for anybody to be at any meeting and follow, and, uh, it is gonna be a report, it's gonna go to the city council. But I think this process is, I mean, we've started at the very beginning of this city charter. There was a, there was a method, there was a reason, there was a plan, it was well done. It was discussed by everybody up here, and there's a lot of expertise up here, not necessarily myself, but we had a lot of, uh, advice. Uh, we did a lot of studies about the things we've, we've looked at from a hundred cities in the state of Texas. And, uh, I think that, uh, this process is moving along the way it should. And I think if you're a citizen and you want some input, you still have the opportunity, but you've had the opportunity since we started.
Can I, uh, go back to some of the feedback, and I, I had trouble reading my notes, so I've reread them now, I can see my notes, so. The, the, the suggestion was, the, the, I, suggestion was made, or the issue was raised, that when, when there's a bond issue brought before council, it's only read once, and it's, uh, in section three. I'm not sure what that's about. Mike, can you help me understand that? So, what's?
So, our, as you know, the charter requires two readings for each ordinance. But there's a specific provision in Texas law, I think it's in the finance code. I think that's where it is. Anyway, it talks about when you issue a certificate of obligation, and you've got to go through the, the ordinance process to adopt that. You only need, in fact, you, not only, you only need one hearing, or one ordinance reading, but it requires one ordinance reading. It says it dispenses with any sort of charter conflict, uh, that you may have. And so, and in, in, um, the, the comment was right, that it's, it's led to confusion at times, and I've explained it, um, and we, we put it in the background when, when those, uh, CO ordinances go to council. Um, but that's, that's just, again, state law trumping our charter, which state law has a, is a right to do. I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I can ask, I, I haven't seen it in, in charters, uh, not that I'm an expert on any other charter, but I have, I've never seen it addressed in a city charter with two readings or three readings like, you know, we have, so.
Okay, so I, that's, uh, okay. And, uh, so that, to, to address Bruce's question, we, we did not address that, and we did not address the mayoral role in voting.
Right.
Uh, that's not something we discussed and hasn't been brought up, and unless someone on the group wants to-
Personally, I want to see, I want my mayor to vote, and I want to see how he voted.
I agree.
On every subject, he or she.
I agree.
I agree.
And, uh, Mr. Ferguson brought up the question of, uh, have we discussed the number of ca, of council people or voting, uh, electing by district, or, or, uh, rather than a large? No, we did not address that issue at all.
We did address the term limit, or the terms going from two-year to three-year.
We, we talked about that.
We decided against that.
Well, we, the advice we got from Charlie, the attorney, was that that triggers a whole different, uh, set of circumstances. If someone resigns or is recalled, or you, you can't appoint someone, right, Mike? You have to have an election?
You have to, the, the, the three, um, main consequences are if someone, if there's a vacancy, you've got to go to an election. If you announce for another office, you're, you've automatically resigned.
Effective immediately, correct?
Pardon?
Immediately.
Immediately, yeah. I mean, you can say, I'm, I'm gonna run for county commissioner, and you're, you're done from, um, from this. And, uh, what's the third one? Escapes me. I'll, I'll think about it, and I'll come back to you. But, yeah, there's, we, we talked about it, three pretty big consequences.
And the, the, uh, section eight is a very, uh, long, uh, not long. Section eight is, uh, is the financial management section, or article eight in all of subsequent sections, is the financial management part of the charter. We with Amy Dodger did a fairly extensive, uh, uh, modification rewriting. I think the major thing we, we added to that, we didn't change any meeting or any requirement. City council can always change the budget. They've got total control over that city manager, they can tell him what to do, or her, what to do, anytime. So, where we took things out while the city council can, we didn't, you don't have to say, state that city council controls. City council controls. That's just, that's the way it is. Now, charter does delegate to, to city manager some actions. And that's, some of those actions are stated. He can move some money around, as long as it doesn't have any net impact. I'm, I'm making general statements. What we did is we added the guidelines of the, of the Government Financer, Finance Officers Association guidelines. Everything we do in our budgeting process, we're gonna follow those guidelines. And, uh, and we cleaned it up so it sort of made sense, uh, is what we were doing. Yeah, we did take some things out, but we were just, we were cleaning things up. It, it doesn't, our intent is not to change the practices at all of our current award-winning finance department. None. And, uh, 'cause we want them to continue to be award-winning, so. Having said that-
And with regards to districts, uh, you brought up, uh, the districts. Uh, even like with the school board, they have districts, but you don't have to live in the district you represent. Uh, so there's a little bit of a loophole in there, but council has discussed districts in the past, and we felt it was the best for the, all the citizens and the community to be, be able to vote for all the members of council instead of having just one area being able to vote for one person. And it was brought up many years ago during, I think the city got sued, or, or-
We got, we got sued, and we fought it to keep, uh, at large.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and, but they actually prevailed to keep it at large, so that all the members in the community could, could be involved in that. Uh, and with regards to the mayor, uh, being set separate, that was an actual charter change where, that the citizens voted for the mayor to be separate and not just a council member. And having been a mayor, the duties are different. There, you have the same duties as a ca, as a council member, but they're definitely over and above. I mean, there's a lot more time that goes into it, you have more meetings with staff, you have more meetings in the community. Uh, you're expected to do ribbon cuttings, welcome speeches. Uh, you, you, as Ben Lowe told me when I went into office, you can run it, or it will run you. And, and I learned very quickly what he meant. It didn't take long to figure out what he was referring to. And I delegated a, a lot, 'cause there was a lot of welcome speeches. These groups come into town, they want the mayor. If they specifically ask for the mayor, I did my best to be there. If they just wanted someone to come read, I let my council members participate, or the city manager at the time even participate in those welcome speeches. But there's a lot of time, you meet with legislators. Uh, I went to Washington DC, I mean, there's a lot more that goes on than just a council member. And the public may not see it on a day-to-day basis, but there's a whole lot more time. And I think having the, allowing the public to vote on who you want that person to be is very important because they are, they are figuring, I mean, this, the city manager has a very important role also 'cause he's representing the city also. But at the end of the day, when the heat comes down the, the pipe, the mayor's, the mayor gets singed a lot also. So it's, it's not always a fun place to be. So you have to have someone who can handle the, the good and the bad. Uh, and, and that person needs to be a good delegator and a good, uh, person who can run a meeting well and keep things flowing. So, with that in mind, I'll be quiet now, so.
No, I swear.
I saw you looking at your log, so.
Single-member districts, because I, 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 I've thought about this long and hard. Single-member districts, when we had the lawsuit, and the school gave up, and they went to single-member districts, and I would take days of vacation from the city and work for the school district during their elections. They used to have heavy turnout on their elections. They would have three times the voters the city of Kerrville would have. They would, they'd have three thousand, and we'd have, you know, six hundred or so. But they would have many more voters. As soon as you went to single-member districts, you could only vote for the person that was in the district that you, running for the district that you would in. Their vote count went down to under fifty votes. And people got so confused by it also. And what you don't realize, when you go to single-member districts, that takes away everybody's right in the city to vote
Right.
for every council person. And you can only vote whenever someone is running in your district. And so it takes away a lot of the citizens' rights, in my opinion. So, I would not want to discuss single-member districts.
I tend to agree, because it does take away your ability to, to select your city government. And, and I would have a thought also on, uh, having the city, having this, the, the mayor only vote in tie-breaking situations. That's, that's a double-edged sword. Number one, it puts a, it puts a lot of responsibility, it puts a lot of power in one person's hands to make a decision for four people. It takes away the power from the city council, because you might have, you know, uh, a disagreement in, in, in decisions being made, and if one person has the ability to, you know, al, always, you know, make that decision, I think it's not representative of a city of our size of electing your city government, uh, in having, in having a system like that. I think, I think it's just, I think you, you have, you elect five people to vote on your issues. You elect the mayor because he does certain things that the city council doesn't do, but you give five people that, you elect them to make the decisions you want made, let them make the decisions. Don't, don't limit it to having one tiebreaker.
Okay, unless there's, uh-
I have one more that came up tonight, was the, um, when there's vacancies, for whatever reason. And the, I had, as you know, no problem with council appointing a vacancy until you get to multiple vacancies in an election year. And that suggestion of taking those who got the top vote, and, um, they took the time, the money, the effort to run for office, that would be, I didn't have that solution, but that would be a good solution to my question about multiple vacancies.
Yeah, we, we, Peggy, we, uh, discussed that around and round and round.
Except for the multiple vacancies, we didn't.
Well, we just, we discussed the city council, even two city council people had the ability to fill the, the, the empty seats. And, uh, that's by the charter, and, and, and we don't know, we, we, we tried to figure out how to do that differently. We, we didn't come up with a solution, did we?
No, but that, that sounds illogical to me, because you still have the voter input.
Well, I think you have to leave it up to the two people that are still on council to look at all that data, all that information. And there may be, uh, it may be more important to, to, I think, to look to, uh, someone who may, maybe did not run.
Well, if you've got multiple vacancies, like in that, um, book that we got on, um, the various cities in Texas, and a large majority of the cities had no problem with council appointing the first vacancy, but they wanted elections after that, uh, first vacancy. Well, to save the city money of having an election, you already have a, a top, a, a second top vote getter.
If you did that gang type voting, though, we're not, we don't do gang voting, so, uh-
No, that isn't gang voting, no.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure, so, so if, I'm not sure what you're-
Okay, if you have an election, the first three people there, Brenda wins the election, and then somebody, you resign, then Karen would be the next top vote getter as far as the number of votes from the, those who went to that election. Then if she was still willing and wanting to serve on council, you wouldn't have to have another election, you wouldn't have to go to that expense, and she could fill the position.
I understand. I, I, I'm still, I still believe it's up to the remaining council people. Anybody else want to chime in?
I, I agree that it should be up to the council to, to fill, to complete their council.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I would like to make one other statement, if I could, once Peggy's through.
Hmm, go, uh, that was it.
We had a public hearing, and we invited the public to come and give comments. And I didn't want them to think, go away thinking we were critical of their comments, uh, in our discussions. Um, because I'm glad we, we have public hearings here all the time, and nobody comes. So I'm glad to see that we had people come and give comments. But I just wanted them to note that we have thoroughly discussed all of these items. And that's the point I wanted to get across, not the point that we're cri, we're criticizing your comments.
Well, great, and well said. Thank you. Any, any, anything else? I mean, we, this is how we sort of run our meetings, so if we just let people, okay.
Well, and let me say one more thing, then I'll shut up. Uh, what precipitated, part of what Mckay was saying, was a few years ago, we had a election, and the mayor went from place two, the mayor, that position was appointed. Within a few months, we had a council member who died. That place was appointed. Later in the spring, we had another council member who had been in office less than a year, and he resigned for business reasons, and that place was appointed. So you actually ended up with a council who, during the course of twelve months, ended up with the majority of people who were appointed. And two of those terms were for well over a year. Uh, Gary had just been elected along with Gene Allen. So, you know, those were both long-term appointments, it wasn't just a few months or six months. Uh, and then the other one, I think, was for, it was for a year, I believe, Warren Ferguson. No, Mary Ellen Summerlin. Uh, and then the other one, I think, was for, it was for a year, I believe, Warren Ferguson, no, Mary Ellen Summerlin. Uh, Mary Ellen finished, uh, the, the, no, no, I'm sorry, it was, uh, Glenn Andrew, who, who we appointed for the one year of Bonnie's remaining term. So it was kind of weird circumstances. I, I mean, I've been on multiple councils where people have been appointed for leaving. I had resigned one time, somebody was appointed to take my place. Uh, things happened, but it was just a very strange year. And we talked about many, many hypotheticals on how to cover that. And there really was just not a good way to do it. You would have to get someone who would, would be willing to go through an election. Uh, and Kim has just been through an election, so has George. You know, they're not fun. And if you wanted someone to run for, for one-year term, if you put them up for that next, if, next, next e- election in May, I don't know, you'd find a lot of people wanting to raise their hand to run for a one-year term. It's hard enough to run for a two-year term, especially your first term, cause you're, you're still learning. Those first two years, you, you get elected, the first thing that happens is you're thrown into a budget. And, you know, so it's not a lot of fun. It's, I, I'm not gonna say it's not fun, it's, it takes a lot of time. And you'll see your first year or two, and really it takes two terms to really get your feet on the ground, to really be an effective, truly effective council member. And, but, but, but the reason for the, I'm kind of going above and beyond what we talked about. But adding that third term, why we did three terms instead of two, is because, you know, y- y- you, you've, you've been on there for four years. Hopefully, you know, you're a solid council person, you're there for the leadership, for the people coming in, as there's turnover. But it was also brought up that three terms is probably enough. Uh, and as far as I know, I'm probably the only person that this would have affected. Uh, I'm the only guy who's gone beyond three terms. But even mine, I would not have broken this, cause I was appointed for a year, I ran in for a year, and then I did my, my third term. So even I, this wouldn't have affected me either, even though I was on council for almost eight years. So it's, three, three terms is about as long as most people can last. So, I mean, that's, that, that's a lot of stress, it's a long time. So anyway, but, but that was a little bit of the history as to where this debate came from. And we couldn't find good language on how to handle multiple appointments in one year, when it was actually three totally different circumstances. I mean, filling someone who became mayor, someone died, and some guy resigned because of his bu- business. We pretty much ran the gambit on why people resign, so, or leave office, so.
Okay, uh, this, I'm passing it around, uh, there's copies for Mike and, uh, take one and pass it around. Uh, this is a, a listing of our, our recommendations, all forty-two of them. And, uh, uh, I highlighted that the special ones, uh, I'm also passing around, uh, take one, the, uh, an excerpt from the, uh, two thousand and thirteen CRC report made to the city council. So you can see how, uh, they did that. Uh, they basically put their s- uh, specific change, uh, they showed the red line piece, uh, with the new wording, and then all that, they had the rationale. What I'm suggesting, since I think it's not, uh, appropriate or fair or whatever for me to write the rationale on all of these, that we split these forty-two up among us. And, uh, each of us try to, uh, put together the rationale for the changes that we're, we're making here. And, uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll get together again at our next meeting and go over those and, and resolve those. But, uh, are you willing to take on seven or eight of these, uh, recommendations and give your shot at the rationale for them? Now, uh, I, I, I think it's not fair for everybody to take, uh, all the colored ones, because, uh, those are the biggies, if you will, so, uh, um.
Well, you're gonna have to eliminate.
We could go through each section and you ask who wants to do each section. I'll volunteer for two point oh one.
How about two one oh one, two oh two, and two oh three?
Okay. Um, that two oh two E, I think was someone else's.
That's the nepotism one?
I'll do three, that was me.
The full terms?
No, the.
Who's, who's gonna do the term limits, that's Mike?
I'll do that.
Sigerman? And two oh three C?
I think we're going to.
Let's see, uh.
I'll do that as well, if you want me to do two oh three C.
I'm gonna try to get, let everybody do all of them. Uh, two oh four?
I'll do that one.
Two oh five?
I'll do that one. Well, I mean.
Three oh two was mine, I'll do it.
I'm sorry, was that last one, Mr. Sigerman?
Which one?
I didn't see who was saying that very last one that you all did.
For number nine?
Compensation? Two oh five, me.
Fine.
Okay, Stephen.
Number nine? Number nine is.
That's just a word change, John.
I know, but we gotta do it.
I'll do it.
Nine, three oh one, uh, that one was mine.
Yeah.
Or I can give it, she can do that one.
Which one, sorry?
Michelle, the, uh, three oh one.
Yeah.
Three oh two, the disabled, I'll do that one.
Seven A?
Rebound, so.
I'll do that, I'll do that.
Mike Sigerman?
I'll do it, three oh seven A, I'm at my case.
Oh, I know what you meant. Uh, four oh one, uh, section four.
I'll do that. Four oh one.
I'll do, I'll do five oh one, or unless you want to, Brenda?
Uh, where we added the word.
Thirteen, round number thirteen.
Uh, annexations.
Well, yeah, that's part of it, we, we rewrote up those whole.
Five oh one B?
C, two, five oh four, all of those.
And four, yes, I could do that.
Actually, all the way down to twenty-two, those are all kinda. I wanted to do five oh four.
I think the, one person needs to do fourteen through twenty-two.
I'm just teasing, yeah.
Okay.
Brenda, you got those?
Fourteen through twenty-two, I'm not, not fourteen. Uh, that was the recall section?
It's on, yeah, it's on.
Yes, it re- initiative recall on all of those.
Okay, how far down does it go?
All the way to the end, five, twelve, or B.
Well, B, okay.
Uh, I'll do.
Yes, I've got them all.
The others, I can't support it because of the way I voted.
Okay, you're gonna do six oh one, number twenty-three?
I can do six oh one and seven oh, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
I'll do twenty-six.
Thirty, thirty-one.
Uh, twenty-seven through, uh, thirty-four, thirty-two. Whoever does those, I would suggest that we, uh, let me do those.
Okay.
That's, I don't, just need to sit down, they need to work through all of it.
I'll be thirty-three too, if you want.
Even fine.
I ordered that one. Did you?
Um, I'll do, uh, thirty-four.
I'll do thirty-five if you want.
Yeah. And the, the.
Thirty-six.
Jump down to thirty-eight, who wants to do thirty-eight?
I'll do thirty-eight.
Okay, and I'll do all the rest of them. All right. Uh, yeah.
Thirty-six and thirty-seven, you want me to do those two?
Yeah, we skipped those.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll do fourteen oh one. Since I used to deal with that quite a bit.
All right.
I think so, this one.
Great, go fourteen oh one. Okay, uh, Mike, is, is it okay if they put their draft together and they just send that to me?
Yes.
Okay, so you all got my email address. You just, you don't need to do anything but put your rationale in reference, what's your rationale. And if, I tried to word the recommendation, if it, if it doesn't, is it worded correctly? To your liking, reword it. I mean, this is just, this is just me reading through it and saying, okay, we were rewriting, or we were deleting, or amending. I mean, if you wanna say it differently, please do. And if you wanna say it in language that the council might wanna use it on their ballot, try that too. I mean, that, this is the ballot language, I believe.
It, it's close to it, because, um, what we'll do after, um, council accepts the report and votes on, you know, which changes to move forward with, then we, then there is a process where you get it into the ballot format, and it, it's a bit different. Um, you, and of course you'll have a ballot, and then you'll have kind of a publication. Brenda's talked about that before, that we'll put in the paper, but, um, if, between those two documents, you, you should certainly have a good idea of what you're voting for. And certainly you, you'll have, you should have great, you have the opportunity to be educated prior to going to the polls. And that, that's the intent, obviously.
And also at that point, we do have, as one of the comments was tonight, was, uh, the financial impact to the budget. By law, we have to provide that financial impact, uh, so the voter knows how much that comment's gonna cost him.
Mike?
Can I say a couple things? So, we, we talked about the, the, I'm going from a two-year term to a three-year term. And so here, here's the three, um, consequences. Talked about the automatic resign to run. Um, the other, the one I forgot was the majority vote. You would need that instead of a plur- plurality. So you would then go, if with, if you had three people running, you'd, you'd have a runoff.
Yeah.
Some costs there. Um, and then we talked about the vacancy, you would have to have an election to fill vacancies. Um, the other part to this is, um, probably not today, but tomorrow, uh, for sure, I'll get the current draft on the website, so at least people know as of, um, June fourth. I think that's the latest draft, cause you all really haven't made any changes here tonight. I'll, I'll put the six-four draft on the website, and then I will put this list that Mr. Harrison has put together on there as well, so people at least know kind of what y'all are thinking, um, to date. The, the final thing is, um, I think I've sent you a report, both, um, kind of an ongoing report of what y'all have done, and, um, the discussion that's occurred, and then you have the example report from two thousand and thirteen. You know, rely on those, or if you wanna ask me a question about why we worded it a certain way, you know, I'll be around. I'll, I'll happy to help.
And, and, uh, uh, along the line of what he was saying, uh, if someone resigned in, with having to appoint somebody, or to have the, the election for the person, there's only two times a year you can hold an election. And you have to have proper notice for that election. So depending on when that person resigned or passed away or whatever, uh, you could be without that council person for nine months.
Right.
Could be without him for a year.
Could be without him for a year, if, well.
You could have a vacant seat.
By the time you have, yeah, the, so there's, that was another one of the consequences that was discussed.
You mean a three, a three-year term? Do I?
Yeah, three-year term, yeah, that was one of the, the, the hard parts about having that seat have to be elected, is you could have that seat vacant for quite a while, I mean, for a long and extended period of time, where now, it's thirty days, forty-five days, uh.
Is our commission, ma'am, extended? Or we sunset?
No, it doesn't expire till July, uh, so, but I think based on the comments, yeah, good luck. Um, based on the comments, what I'll do is make sure that gets on an agenda, and so that we, um, you want another six months, you want nine, twelve months?
Well, the, the question is, is, you know, in our charter explicitly says we have to have, uh, our proposal, uh, I think it was August, or July, August, something like that, because they were, they were targeting November election.
And we're still doing that. We're still targeting November election, and so what we'll probably do is get you an extra term, extension on, extension on your term.
Are they talking about a bond election in November?
Um, let me put it this way, not as strongly.
Well, I, I, I still feel, and of course it's gonna be council's decision, we don't want to cause a special election that's, you know, gonna end up costing the city, you know, six thousand, seven thousand dollars, just for our changes. I don't see why they can't wait till May.
Well, we've, we've talked through it.
I know, but that's my comments.
Yeah, right, okay.
So, so, uh, uh, check your calendar, June nineteenth is two weeks from today. Or is everybody, just so good for that?
Yeah.
What happens on the eighteen?
Four o'clock, yeah, yeah, do something, George. You can't?
And we'll study our rationales at that time.
Well, can you get your rationale to me within?
Or then, but we'll discuss.
A week, maybe?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm sure, can we do that in a week?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and then I'll try to put it in one document, and with, working with Cheryl, we'll get that back out. I'm sure we're gonna rely upon Peggy and Brenda a lot to help us work some of this stuff, because you all seem to have a, a, an ability to do that very well, so, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, so don't. I'm not, I'm not worried about if you change my words, okay? So, yeah, so, yeah, George, you.
Yeah, just a question on ultimately, so you got.
Can you come?
Number forty-two, forty-two amendments or whatever.
Can you come to the podium so that it'll be recorded, please?
Um, so, when it gets to a ballot, council is going to package them, like in groupings?
Well.
Are we gonna vote all?
We're gonna make it, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna suggest to our group that we make a proposal on how to package them.
Okay, so.
And so, and I did a rough package, seventeen.
Okay, so essentially the voter is gonna be making seventeen votes in that scenario?
Well, that, right now, that's my scenario, it would get down to seventeen. Now, at the last, uh, two thousand and thirteen election, there was eleven proposed, eight made it to the ballot, as I remember. And so, I don't think all of these will make it to the ballot, quite honestly.
Yeah, okay.
But for that very reason, the number. But I think you can get it legitimately down to seventeen, and maybe smaller. I, I'm, I'll rely on Mike.
Well, right, like, like one of, one of the changes, or a series of changes happens in that Article Four, which is the referendum petition. I, I think, not having spent any time on it yet, I think you could package that as one, with the significant changes. And of course, Mr. Broody, there's gonna be, um, um, on the website and the newspaper, you know, beyond just, just the ballot language, it'll be specifics on what the, what, what will occur if it's approved.
Okay, and then to kind of what she, um, Ms. Craig was talking about, I would strongly urge, if you guys have a say in it, if this is the only thing on November deal that you ask council to push it, because you'll get no turnout for this, if it's the only thing there, but that's just a.
Yeah, we, we, we discussed that quite a bit, and, uh, you know, our charter doesn't, our charter implies that there's gonna be something, and so we're just, uh, trying to comply with our charter. And, but I'm, I'm like Brenda, I don't think we need to be spending.
I don't either.
Uh, taxpayer money, if this is the only thing being done.
Probably changes were there, was it in oh three, where there's like a hundred of them? It was a magazine that was.
Yeah, I had to publish a whole magazine.
It was a magazine, each one of those, there's over a hundred changes that were, and the voter had to vote on each one of them.
It ended up being, um, four legal pages front and back.
Yeah, so we'd.
We're not gonna be that big.
Yeah.
But to be fair, what, that was the first.
First time in twenty years or something.
Twenty, thirty years, something, yeah.
Yeah, if we can bundle them, Brenda.
But, I, 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 I'm hoping that, but I don't, we'll see what the, what, uh, a lot of these changes, I mean, all of these changes were recommended. I, were, are important. You know, the gender bias, we only got some of the gender biases out of, of it, but we didn't get all the gender bias out. I personally think all the gender bias needs to get out of the charter, but it's not, it's not important enough to make it another discreet change, all of them, we got some of them out. Anything else? We're adjourned until June eighteenth, four o'clock, uh, here at the, this building somewhere.
Is this your charter?